That's all.
Yeah, and that's what the purpose of tonight is. It's to be able to bring to the forefront those concepts.
Done. Oh, I just wanted, is it, is a sense of what's contaminated is at that site? Is there any ideas here cleaners or an oil?
I can jump in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's a dry cleaning facility. So dry cleaning liquids which are chlorinated solvents such as petrofluorathylene or sometimes sulfurfluorathylene or triclorathelanes is the secondary compound. And you also have some petroleum from some suspected leaking underground storage tanks. So I'll, I'll be brief. Bill alluded to the ISCO injection. So it's institute chemical oxidation. We went in and put a number of borings in, injected an injectate which is sodium permanganate into the ground. And that reacts with the chlorinated solvent and essentially makes it go away. So we did that work last July through August. We've seen good data thus far, but the data is not, is qualitative right now, not quantitative. Peranganate is purple. So if you collect a sample of the water and it's still purple, that means you still have oxid, uh, oxidant in the ground, so you're still reacting. That's good.
Hello, my name is Rich. Sorry again for having to be here. I never wanted to be here. I would like to thank Superintendent Roggerio and her team for impact bargaining fairly with us and treating us with respect. And again, this member of the bargaining ship was, bargaining members were treated fairly and I appreciate that, I really do, and they will as well. And I do support the work going over to City Hall as well now. And I hope this continues in good faith through all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? We will now close the open mic. And we will begin the 10th special meeting of the school committee. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Absent.
Member, Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
Roll please rise for us losing flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, alright, so the first order of business is the vote to authorize the signing of NMOU between the city and the school department for the benefits position and human resources, which we discussed in the last meeting. It was tabled due to some open questions. And I ran through the, the rationale for the MOU in the, in the previous meeting and want to open it up for any questions or discussions with the committee. Member Capola, Member Castellanos.
Okay, first of all, I hope that we never get ourselves in this predicament again. We talk about transparency all the time, but there was no transparency in regards to what was done behind the committee's back. And that was one of the things that we have all agreed to on the committee, that, you know, would always have transparency and no surprises. So on that note, that's a disappointment that has happened. And I don't know, you know, where the start was, whether it was on the city side, whether it was on the, you know, former school administration side or what, what went down. But the committee should never be left out when it comes to voting on whether it's jobs or changes in jobs, as well as when it comes to a financial piece. That's what our responsibility is, is a committee, and that should happen. I'm personally voting no. And the reason is, I was here when the discussion on the custodians, to bring the custodians to the city side. And we were always assured that custodians would always be in our buildings when our students were in the buildings. That the privatizing was something that would happen when the buildings were closed. It was only going to be cleaning. And, you know, that wasn't followed by the city side. That isn't being followed at all. We're in a predicament where, you know, we have schools without custodians. And my concern is because they didn't honor that, that I feel as though that this is just the start of a movement to move it over. We've had in the past where, you know, we've had people trying to combine our human resources departments and bring it over to the city side. So it's, this isn't something new. And I, and I have a concern that this is just a slippery slope happening with this job here. You know, I would be agreeable where, you know, the union is agreeable to it if the job stayed on our side and went to the other side, you know, to collaborate, but not to send the job to the other side.
Member Castellanos?
I was gonna ask if we could have Mr. Bertino come up, maybe provide some rationale. I know he didn't have that opportunity before last week, just to, just to discuss operational need and what you see this position opening up.
Sure. Michael Bertino, City CFO. To give you a quick history, this probably started close to a year and a half to two years ago. We experienced many changes through regulations in the Affordable Health Care Act. We've been through one minor and one major change in our software. Generally, you have a change in the software when they no longer support a lower version. So the work has changed and some of the process and procedures has changed. We had a number of people over the school side previously doing this work. I know they had some bumping and bidding where they were allowed to move in and around. But with the technical nature of this work increasing greatly, we talked to the administration over at the school, and there wasn't a willingness for them to take on this work. It's, it's difficult. It, it takes a really patient, critical thinker to do this work. So earlier this spring, we met with the previous administration, laid out a game plan, talked to them in April and May, had a meeting in this room in early June, and went through the whole process, checking out job descriptions, defining what this individual would be responsible for, and talk about some of the enhanced benefits that the teachers and other employees of the school system would get. So that's how it, that's how it came about.
How did, how did you guys, how do every, how do we come up with that figure for compensation? Could you kind of go through how that?
Sure. Based on the, the technical expertise to do this work, and it's important that whoever does this work is gonna have the technical expertise. But it was also decided that this person, if a principal of an elementary school or one of the middle schools needed someone to come over and attend a benefits fair or discuss benefits with individual teachers, new hires, whoever it may be, they were gonna be a critical thinker doing the nitty gritty work, but they're also gonna have to dress up and make a presentation and sit one-on-one with the teachers and the individuals. You know, we look at our benefits, we have a great generous benefit package, and a lot of people don't know that, and a lot of people don't take advantage of that. So our goal was to really encourage people to utilize these benefits, and they really haven't. So we figured by going school to school, especially during, you know, open enrollment, having some pre-meetings before it starts, someone who, like I said, could really, you know, dust off their presentation skills and present to the schools. You know, you may have a school with, you know, 10 or 20 new employees where they didn't have the chance, you know? People get handed a booklet day one of school, sometimes they don't read through it. I'll give you a little story. I started here four years and five days ago. I was handed a booklet, and I'm one of those people that read through the benefits. I read through the benefits, I read through the health plan. I had a child that was ready for ortho, for orthodontist. And going through the benefits book, if I paid them $68, I could be part of Harvard Universal Plan. Even though we don't cover orthodontists with our health plan, it was a side plan that was in the booklet. For $68, I went and I saved over $1,400 on my son's braces. And my goal is to educate anybody who wants to learn and listen about this benefit and these many other benefits that we have, so they can really keep more of their own paycheck. And that was really what I wanted to do. And we had been talking in general about this, but then when it came down to affordable health care, all the different reporting requirements, the penalties that we received, we, at one time, two years ago, we got a $7 million penalty. And right now, it's down to about $130,000 or $40,000. And it's all derived from not being able to understand the different requirements that we need to do. So, you know, this position is, is a unique position. It's gonna pay somebody to stay there, to really sharpen their critical skills and also be able to present. So, so we wanted to compensate people fairly inadequately to do that type of work.
You answered my, um, half of my last, my last question. This, this might go for, um, this final question might be actually answered Superintendent Roggerio. Some of the current system challenges, I know we've talked about that, that some of the fees that you just discussed, those, obviously, we have, we haven't been able to pin down the process and procedures as they updated, so it looks like we were getting tagged with certain fees. So with, with this position, could you kind of discuss how, discuss the strategy that we're gonna do utilized to implement the prevention of fees to come forward? Like, what does that look like?
I assume the prevention of the fees are this position, that's my understanding, that this position is to help prevent the fees. On our side, there still needs to be a connection with this position. The new staff come into our HR department, we need to provide them with information, but give them the connection to that position. I see this as a, another layer of oversight. That's how I see it, similar to when we hire, you know, an administrator for a specific position. It's another layer of oversight because we're such a big organization.
Thank you.
I think I saw, I remember Gaitley and then Member Peña.
Mike, I mean, Mr. Bertino. I, I'm just so confused by this whole, you know, posting, to be honest with you. Anything that you want for our schools, it's known. Protocol is that you come meet for the school committee. We have personnel director, I mean, um, chairperson of the personnel, you know? The need is stated usually by the superintendent, then we post it, or we go over the posting with you. For me to receive this and to see that it was, posting date was July 15th, 2022, and us not even be aware of it, and, but yet we're responsible for the 90 to 100,000 plus in the salary. It, it's very confusing and disheartening to me that our committee gets such little respect when it comes to new postings like this. And, and the urgency, could you go over the urgency here again?
Yeah, I'm just gonna jump in a little bit on the, on the process, because I think, you know, just, just wanna reiterate in terms of the confusion, because I appreciate the question. It's, it's not, it's not an LPS posting, so that's why it wouldn't have gone to the Personnel Subcommittee. What's, what's before us is a MOU between the, the city and the school department to, to fund a position that's on the city side. So the, the posting wouldn't have come through the school committee. But I'll, I'll let Mr. Bertino talk to the, to the urgency around it and the timing.
Ask you the question then?
Sure, yeah.
So if it's not coming through us, then why are we paying for it?
It, because those are two different things.
Well, can you explain that?
Yeah, so the, yeah, absolutely. The, uh, under Chapter 70, expenses that are towards education of K through 12 students can be funded by Chapter 70 funds, even if they're not administered by the public school district, but if they're administered by the city. So this would be an expense that is administered by the city and is eligible for, for the net school spending, and so it's funded through the public schools. But I, I mean, Mr. Bertino, you're, if, if you, you wanna talk a little bit to the, to the urgency of the position or, yeah?
Sure. The urgency started in April when we were doing open enrollment, and there was nobody willing to help coordinate the open enrollment for the schools. So what we did is we allocated resources from my office to coordinate the open enrollment for the school. That was indicative of that we knew somebody wasn't prepared or didn't feel like they wanted to do this work. So the urgency was, you had close to 275 or 80 new hires coming on September 1st. They only have 30 days to elect their benefits. So that's why it was posted in July. We wanted to have somebody in place in August so they could be prepared. But again, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but we have, they only have 30 days. And last year, we had over 150 people that didn't elect benefits, that were entitled to benefits at this time. So all these things kind of snowballed into, you know, we have to jump in place, this work is technical in nature, and, you know, people need to know, you know, our benefits, and we wanna make sure they get all the correct information.
And, and just to jump a little bit on the sort of timing and the process, I think, you know, we certainly strive to, uh, have the full and open communication and transparency. I do think that there was a bit of a break in the forward momentum in this process as a result of transitions that are, that happening. But, you know, we, we made the full presentation at the last school committee meeting, have created an opportunity to ask and answer any kind of questions, you know, coming back at a, at a second community, uh, committee meeting to have the discussion, and so certainly are aiming for that level of transparency. I have Member Peña, Member Dugan, and then Member Castellanos, and then was that, Member Capola?
Please.
Okay. Peña?
Yep.
Dugan? Castellanos? And then Capola? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bertillo. Thank you for the, uh, your explanation, and I did a little research myself, and I see, you know, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of people that didn't get to enroll in benefits, and also, we're backtracking, trying to get, remove some of those fines. And there's a number of people down there in City Hall, you know, overtaking this workload, trying to backtrack and put us on, you know, put us on track because we're paying a lot of fines. And I do support having someone going down there and solely focusing on this, because it's a need, it's something that we need, and we gotta get focused, I appreciate it. Thank you, Rich, for coming up through open mic and speaking, and I understand, like, we, we really need, this is the sense of urgency where we need to really get on, because, you know, we, we got all these fines, it's ridiculous. I heard there's even people that left the system, are still getting, you know, benefits through the, you know, because of the lack of, you know, the system, wherever the change, there was a change in the system. So I understand the sense of urgency, and I totally, thank you for the explanation.
Member Dugan?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I guess this would be to anyone that could answer it. So on the posting, we do have, you know, the posting date of July 15th, we've got the closing date of July 28th. Could you just maybe give us a little timeline of, should we approve this position tonight? You know, how things will go into place with this position and putting people in place to, to do the job?
If, if this position is approved, we'll resume the process that we put in place to pick a candidate. And then obviously, we would make a, an offer of employment, assuming anywhere, someone would have to give anywhere from two to three to four weeks notice. And then we would come in and we would go right to work. You know, again, we're a little bit behind the eight ball, but, you know, we're not concerned. We'll work as hard as we have to do to make this successful and make sure that people understand that there's a lot of good benefits out there and how to put a name with the face and how they can reach out and get the information they may need. So it's gonna be difficult, but we're prepared for the challenge, and we're committed to, you know, taking on this, this aspect of it, because it is, it is technical. And so we are prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Member Castellanos?
So since April, we had a sense of urgency, right? Is that what you were saying? Is that what?
I, I don't know if I would say April, I would probably say last year when we, last summer, when we hired all these people and they didn't get their benefits. So it started then, we had some casual conversations about, you know, creating a new office internally or maybe aligning somebody to do this work. We sat with the prior administration, we talked it out. But it came to a head, you know, when the fines, we got rejected from the appeals that we were doing for some of the fines, so then we had to do something. Because it's not fair to the individuals and it's not fair to the taxpayer to put their harder earned money into fines, because we can't get people. And, and we're not the only industry that's having trouble getting people to work. You know, there's not enough people to do the amount of work out there. So that's when we raised it. We raised it, you know, to the prior administration, we talked about it in this room with everybody involved, we put a game plan together. And, you know, we didn't want to extend, continue the process until we had a signed MOU, because it's important that the person that we're gonna invest in has at least the comfort knowing that the job will be good for three years as long as they perform. And we'll, we'll go on from there.
Okay. I just wanted to understand just the timeline, so how long this is going on, to see, you know, why, I know, this, we just learned about this about a few weeks ago, so I just kind of want to, to really understand.
Again, yeah, no, that's fine, but it, I will tell you, it's, it's been a while, but it's never been to this level. And also, you're expanding, you expanded, you know, your employees, and it's a lot of work in a short period of time.
And I'd just like to just, just publicly disagree with your statement about no one willing to do the job, because I think there, there would be some people willing to do that job.
Actually, I can tell you, we were told that by your administration. That's the only reason I said it. So I'm, I'm just copying what they said.
Thank you. I just wanted to just.
No, I, that didn't come out of my mouth, that came out of somebody on your side of the equation.
Okay, I just felt like, you know.
No, I would never say that.
We have people in this union behind you who probably think very different, and I know some of the people might, you know, would have been interested.
Again, that didn't come out, that was, I should have noted that, that didn't come out of my mouth, that was copied.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Can I just clarify something?
Yeah, please.
I just wanna say, I, I know I spoke to each of you individually, and part of what I said was, this isn't a people problem, this is a system problem. This is, the people work hard in this district and have the ability to do great work. But when the system moves people around and this, and changes who's doing different roles, that's the system that's hurting here. So I just want to be clear, this isn't a people problem, it's a system problem.
I think I had Member Capola and then Member Gaitley.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because the job got posted, and shouldn't the MOU have come to us first before they would have gone ahead and posted a job? That's all I'm asking. You had, need a vote from us, you know? Obviously, he could have just gone and hired somebody if we didn't need to vote on the MOU. If we have to vote on the MOU, the MOU should have come to us. If they were having talks and discussions in April, May, June, whatever, and, and posted the job in July, we shouldn't be here in September voting on an MOU. If he could just go forward and post the job without an MOU, but you have to have our authorization, so that's why, it should have come this way. So in the future, let's do it in the right order. The MOU first. Everybody be on board and understand the direction somebody is going in, and, but it should be the MOU first before they post the job. They posted the job, they probably have applicant, applicants who are waiting to hear whether they have a job, or maybe they've already chosen somebody. But the MOU should have come first. And I'm not saying that's you, I'm saying whatever the group was that was sitting in here in April.
Yeah, and, and no, I appreciate the question, but just, just to be clear, the MOU is about the funds, so posting a job is not incurring any funds. So, you know, I, I absolutely wanna strive to be on the same page here, but just as, you know, because you asked the question about shouldn't it be, so that's, so the MOU definitely needs to be in place when we sort of incur the obligation and, and hire someone, but the, a posting doesn't obligate us to hire anyone, it's, it's a posting, so. But I, I appreciate the, the point. Member Ga, Member Gaitley, and then Member Peña.
So, Mr. Bertino, the closing date is Thursday, July 28th, 2022, and then down here, it says some last update is July 15th, 2022, so have you had applicants for this job?
Yes, we have.
And have you hired anybody?
We have not hired anybody.
Okay.
Member Peña?
I'd like to set a motion, approve this, put a motion to vote for this, for the new position.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Just wanna, again, thank the, the committee for the thoughtful questions today and leading up, appreciate the attention to this issue, the, the school administration, the, the partnership with Cemetery and 36 and, and working through their questions. And particularly the, uh, uh, team that's been working to make this stay, stay afloat in the meantime, and, and under a lot of pressure to make sure that folks are getting their benefits, and look forward to the continued collaboration. We are different departments and report up in different structures, but we are all here in the city land to do what's in the best interest of our community. And, and the, the divide between the city and school is a bureaucratic one, it's not a moral one, you know, we're, we're on the same team here, and I appreciate the, the committee, the, for taking this, taking this up. So, any further discussion? Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
No.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia? Absent. Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia? Absent. Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.[492.83]
I have come to see myself in need, your faith has gone away. What's good is brief for a soul to keep inside. What I saw was a man in need of a simple plea. For a prayer that was primed to cut from the cloth so endlessly. I cling to thee but a heart of gold will sustain. What's left for you now? Peace for all time. What's left for you now? Peace for all time. Running circles now on the edge somehow, I don't know where I stand. What's good is brief for a soul to keep inside. What I saw was a man in need of a simple plea. For a prayer that was primed to cut from the cloth so endlessly. I cling to thee but a heart of gold will sustain. What's left for you now? Peace for all time. What's left for you now? Peace for all time. What's left for you now? Frustrated boy, it shows here clear in the pale moonlight. What keeps you tossed and turned all night? Well, I've been through this about a thousand times. We move from left to right feeling the motion. Well, I can finally get close enough this time. I ran through the street calling out your name. Met you in the dark to feel the same. Always in your dreams you hear my voice singing in your head. My darkness calls. You and I came here. A devil's dance with two rivalries just for a night. Bad lips, so soft and hoping for a few. Just one look from you and I know I'm alive. Romantic boy, pragmatic thoughts will forsake you now. I see through you in the realms you dwell. Well, I've been through this about a thousand times. As you come over me, feel the temptation. The night has finally come, I'll take what's mine. I ran through the street calling out your name. Met you in the dark to feel the same. Always in your dreams you hear my voice singing in your head. My darkness calls. You and I came here. A devil's dance with two rivalries just for a night. Bad lips, so soft and hoping for a few. Just one look from you and I know I'm alive. I ran through the street calling out your name. Met you in the dark to feel the same. Always in your dreams you hear my voice singing in your head. My darkness calls. I ran through the street calling out your name. Met you in the dark to feel the same. Always in your dreams you hear my voice singing in your head. My darkness calls. Hearing your... When dealt with young temptation pounding hearts, they speak too soon. This awkward anxious tension builds up in this quiet room. I'm fueling up my vision just to build up and decide. One more lost conviction, one more kissing suicide. Take me for a fool's mistake me. Lately I've been really hard to find. Free me from these changes I'm needing. Holding all of this yearning on the inside. Darling, let your secrets out, confess. Teach me all those things I don't know yet. Take me for a fool's mistake me. Lately I've been really hard to find. Free me from these changes I'm needing. Holding all of this yearning on the inside. Take me for a fool's mistake me. Lately I've been really hard to find. Free me from these changes I'm needing. Holding all of this yearning on the inside. Take me for a fool's mistake me. Lately I've been really hard to find. Free me from these changes I'm needing. Holding all of this yearning on the inside. Dealt with young temptation pounding hearts, they speak too soon.
Friend of mine, you left before your time. But the memory of you remains. Friend of mine, you left before your time. But I'll see you again. Walk along down that long and old road. Carrying with you the heavy load. And I hope that you found yourself some relief. Hope you finally get some sleep. Friend of mine, you left before your time. But the memory of you remains. Friend of mine, you left before your time. But I'll see you again. Had a dream you were high above the clouds. Smoke for me but you didn't make a sound. What you said, well, I couldn't be sure. But I think I got the moral of the story. Friend of mine, you left before your time. But the memory of you remains. Friend of mine, you left before your time. But the memory remains. Friend of mine, friend of mine, friend of mine. You left before your time. But the memory remains. It's kinda short. You make me feel like an outsider staring through a pane of glass. It's a constant reminder of the things we never had. You make me feel so all alone. You make me feel so all alone. My broken heart has turned to stone. Look at me, I'm so alone. You make me feel so alone. I gave you every piece of me and feed your shallow soul. I've never felt so empty, but I guess you'll never know. You make me feel, feel so alone. You make me feel so all alone. My broken heart has turned to stone. Look at me, I'm so alone. You make me feel so all alone. Take another taste of the apple that you stole away. Don't you waste all the happiness that grows. You make me feel so all alone. You make me feel so all alone. My broken heart has turned to stone. Look at me, I'm so alone. You make me feel so all alone. I don't know you but I've seen you before. Saw your face walking through my door in a dream. Maybe déjà vu doesn't seem that way to you. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't say maybe 'cause I think you do. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't drive me crazy, I think it's true. Ooh, your eyes tell me a story so true, gentle sighs. Tell me more than I knew, you're an actress trying to pretend. Dancing in distress, crying to contend. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't say maybe 'cause I think you do. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't drive me crazy, you know it's true. Do you remember? Out in the pale moonlight outside on a dark and cold December night? In the park, the old trees swaying in the breeze. The birds and the bees here trying not to freeze. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't say maybe 'cause I think you do. Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Tell me, baby, do you know me too? Don't drive me crazy, I think it's true.
No, the earth has not stopped turning. The sun has not stopped coming up to shine new light into your life and your situation every single day of your life. The sky is still painted a faithful blue to prove to all men everywhere that God is true blue, faithful, from one end of heaven to the other. He will fulfill his promises. And it can happen for you, whatever it is you need.
It doesn't matter who you are. It doesn't matter where you've been. It doesn't matter what the scar. It doesn't matter what the sin. It doesn't matter how you felt. Somewhere along the way, there is healing for your life today. There's a river that flows from the fountain of God. And it heals everything along the way. I've tasted and know that for every broken heart, there is healing in Jesus' name. He looks beyond how far you've gone. He looks beyond when you were hurt. He looks beyond who stole your song. He looks beyond what made it worse. He looks beyond what others failed to reach out to you and say. There is healing for your life today. There's a river that flows from the fountain of God. And it heals everything along the way. I've tasted and know that for every broken heart, there is healing in Jesus' name. It's a river that flows. It's a river that lives. It's the river of life, living waters it gives. There's a river that flows from the fountain of God. And it heals everything along the way. I've tasted and know that for every broken heart, there is healing in Jesus' name. It's a river that flows from the fountain of God. And it heals everything, everything, along the way. I've tasted and know that for every broken heart, there is healing in Jesus' name. There is healing in Jesus' name. There is healing in Jesus', healing in Jesus', healing in Jesus' name. In the midst of my confusion, time of desperate need, when I'm thinking not too clearly, gentle voice does intercede. Slow down. Slow down. Be still. Be still and wait on the Spirit of the Lord. Slow down and hear His voice and know that He is God. In the time of tribulation, when I'm feeling so unsure, when things are pressing all about me, comes a gentle voice so still,